Yeah, that's what I could remember. I know that stuff, if it's readily available is pretty cheap, but if they, if there ain't, it's a little more. It's your water in this now. You got water, it's hot.
I didn't suspect you, some of my would have now. All right, time to start. All right, we're gonna call to meet and order. It's a regular session. August the ninth, two thousand twenty-one. And ask for a moment of silent prayer. Amen. I want to do a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing we need to do is approve the agenda. And, uh, we've got one item here, give us some surplus. Stuff that was came in late from the sheriff's department. We add that to it. Is there anything else? All right, if there's nothing else, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The minutes. Did everybody read that? Any things look like? It, uh, was out of order or? It looked okay? We need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make it.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Accounts payable. Did all that look like it was in order? Okay, anybody got any questions? All right, we need a motion to approve accounts payable.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? No, the motion carried. Financial reports? Did it look like it was okay, or anybody got any questions on that? Okay, we need a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, on the appearances, we got Lee Robozie. We talked to her earlier about senior center.
Hi there, where did you guys find me? Is this good? Okay, perfect. Um, I don't wanna have to put it on, I get too close. So yes, my name's Lee Robozie, I'm with Miller County Collaborative Family Connection. There's one of me in every county in the state of Georgia. We are state-funded. Um, we do all things different. It is based on the local community and what we decide we're doing. Every five years, we do a community assessment. Uh, we then find out what our needs are, our SWAT analysis, basically, um, strength, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, that kind of thing. Um, to find out our needs, we then try to find out our resources. A lot of what we do in the state is to leverage dollars. Well, a lot of our rural communities do not have a lot of dollars to just spread around. So what we try to do is figure out how we can share resources. Um, how we can prevent duplication of services. A very small example, when I first started, a small thing was, we had tons of different agencies giving out Christmas assistance to families. We found out numerous families were getting the same gifts from different churches or different organizations. Of course, they're not gonna tell anyone that they're double dipping. Well, those, that money could have been saved to used elsewhere, or used to go to a different family at a different time. So that's just a small example of what we do. Also, we write grants, partner with different agencies, um, to meet those needs in our community. Um, I'm actually housed at the school, majority of our, um, our programs, our objectives are children, youth, things like that related. Um, a lot of stuff that we do is full for the entire community. That is where Shapet Miller was birthed, basically, for our health initiatives. There's tons of money out there for health organizations and working towards that. Um, so we partnered with Spring Creek Health, uh, wrote a grant, we've had it for five years, it's been wonderful. Um, our Russ, Dr. Russ Henley, our vet, he's our strategy team leader for physical activities, so that's a huge component of ours as well as healthy eating and, um, of course, healthcare access. So I received a call when our senior centers were closing down, and that's how I became involved. Um, the county actually contacted me, I then contacted the legislators, they had, they said they had no clue, um, what was going on. We have been in process of meeting with, so we go council on aging, we have calls, they have asked all of the family connection coordinators to provide assistance to them. Um, I was upset that our seniors, um, had nothing to do, they are, in Albany, in Doherty County, they're expecting our seniors to get on their tablets, their smartphones, have no clue that we have horrible internet in the rural areas, it's very scotchy. Um, it's, they just don't understand what happens here in rural, in rural Georgia, Miller County. So, um, early county and myself, we called them in Albany and said, we really want to help our seniors. We had heard many, many things that they were upset about, and lonely, and depression, and so many things. So I met with the seniors, I just learned last month that there is a path committee, I've now since learned what that is and how they were nominated, they change over, roll over every year, so we'll be doing that again, I've learned. So I've been meeting with them, trying to fulfill what they would like, and so through family connection, through Shapet Miller, uh, we are wanting to offer resources for them at your cost, through the library, and New Life, and, um, so many different, even the golf course, so many different agencies. So I was very worried about them receiving meals right there on Ninety-One, right off of the square. So that was my first thing I wanted us to work on, is changing, and we have done, have done that through the church. They are concerned about a location during funerals. So I was wanting to find out, um, in the future, when it is safe, um, that if we could possibly have that family resource center as an option, an alternative location, so that they can just drive through, pick up their meals. Of course, with the peak of COVID, they're not wanting to go out and get in, in large groups or any of that anyway. So I wanted to speak with you guys about that as being a second alternative during funerals at First Baptist, that they couldn't meet there. I'm also looking at some other options as well. Um, while things were kind of, uh, with COVID numbers lower, um, they were wanting to get out, they've been coming to do exercise classes that we have been hosting now for five years, um, at the family resource center already, we've got chair exercises for ones with disabilities. We've got a lot of things going on, and I just wanted to, I guess, get approval with you all to find out if, if that could be an alternate location. Um, and we can meet and discuss this again after COVID numbers if we need to. But, um, another thing I wanted to, to, I've been working with them on, is trying to real, make them realize that we have to share resources. Um, and to be able to possibly use that family resource center or another location in the community to help them receive their needs that they're interested in, but also for, make sure we have physical therapy here. Deion's a wonderful asset in our community, and I understand that they need to have the current senior center. So I'm just trying to meet everyone in the middle, um, trying to make everyone happy as the best we can. Um, so that would work well with the county, the hospital, and, uh, the seniors. Um, another example of how that works is, I've been able to talk to our superintendent, we were able to, um, put the CNA class that the hospital needs to have, which is a wonderful asset in our community. Uh, we've been able to move them now to the, um, school board, and then so I've had to alter alternative, I mean, not alternative school, but adult ed out of there and move them to a different location. So it's just things that we have to do is meet with partners, uh, try to find a happy medium for everyone, and just kind of network, share resources, save money the best we can. So I just wanted you all to know why my name come up, came up months ago about the seniors, and that is why. I'm just trying to help meet their needs, yet also help support the county and the hospital all at the same time. So that's just a really quick summary of it. Um, do y'all have any questions on that?
They're not gonna be going inside to get the meals, they're gonna get them outside.
That is correct. That is all. And they are right now, I think, a little worried about COVID anyway, so they haven't been going out about as much anyway. So yes, and they're working really well at the First Baptist Church. So I don't foresee any of that changing. It would just be on, for funerals, that was just the worry. So when they have their feeding families and they have funerals there, they really didn't need seniors there, and it's only for one hour. Typically, when I volunteer there, I get meals out, dispersed to them in forty-five minutes. But, and I mean, we can, you know, reconvene if we need to about that.
What's y'all's thoughts on that?
Throw that out.
What's y'all's thoughts on that?
That would only be the immediate need.
I'm behind with it myself.
Yeah, as long as they're not going in and participating and.
We just, the rumor was, and I don't know if it happened or not, that when they started, did they, what, the one, I guess, one time that they did that, that some of them had went inside to sit down and eat the meal or whatever?
They, they've never, ever picked up a meal at the family resource center.
They never have?
Ever.
Okay.
They went straight from Mural City, then we were going to move it there just for pickup, and then when I spoke with Doug, he was worried about, you know, mold issues and things that the county offices may be moving over to the family resource center, and I just immediately called, uh, Miss Navy and said, no, we'll go straight to the church.
Okay.
At this point, the church was only concerned during the funeral, but.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah. I think so.
We'll go with that.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Doug. No other questions?
Anybody got anything else? Okay.
I'm gonna go say, my child.
All right, thank you now. All right, next on the appearances, we got Cooks, Redland, and property tax issue, that's pages one through ten.
Hi, I'm Heather Trejo, Undersecretary of Cooks Redlands. Um, I believe the accountant of New York, Beddick Stone, did you receive that?
We got the letter, but it, and I'm, I'm not the only one sitting here, but I mean, it, it don't really give us any more information than what we already had before, what you had already told us. And I mean, I just, I, I mean, what, in the future, does, does the tax notice need to go directly to you, or, or?
Yeah, they need to go, they don't need to come to this address, it needs to come to, well, I can receive them and scan them in.
Where's your office at?
The address that's on file there is, um, their agent that, that basically incorporated y'all. So basically, um, somebody from Cooks Redlands needs to go to, uh, Cody Hamilton over at the tax assessor and change it to the address that you guys want, because that was the address that was sent to them, so they sent everything, and they said that's from when you guys came in, that's the address they've had on file since day one.
From day one?
Yep.
See, because Seminole County, that's a totally different address. So like, I received that, and I, and I paid all that.
Yep.
And that's when we done bills, because we're gonna do bills on Wednesday again, and we're, we're discussing this too, with, with the accountant, she's coming in. And me and her, we, we're just like, where is this located? And we even Googled it, we're like, what? It's like, I, you know, me and I was going.
See, there's, there's a letter also that they sent where that, that agency sent this, your, your CPA in, in New York saying, hey, this is behind, you need to take care of it. So, so they are getting the documentation.
Yeah, but like, like, they don't, I don't get it, you know?
But it, but you just need to go and have that, have that changed.
Yes, I understand.
But I can't, I mean, in my opinion, it don't, it don't justify.
But he was just saying, could we just excuse when COVID happened, and he'll pay, he understands from the nineteen, because he, when we sat down and I discussed, you know, they're not gonna excuse you for nineteen, because, you know, COVID wasn't happening then, but can you be excused for when COVID was happening?
Did they have, were they sick or in the hospital or anything? Because didn't we come up with a, were they in the hospital or sick or anything?
Just, just 'cause the off.
When, when New York, like, completely shut down, we, see, we get paid from them, and we would have to wait, one time we waited for like five to six weeks to receive a check from, like, a paycheck. And that's how the accountant was sending checks from them, and we didn't know if they were sick, or, you know, or their family members were sick, because there was no way that I could contact them, or, you know.
But they were, they were behind in two thousand nineteen also?
See, that was a whole different.
Yeah, I think if they had been behind the first time, it'd have been more inclined, but, just like I said, pattern.
Well, see, what he, what he's saying is, they were already late from another year.
Yes.
And if they had been current right up and, and this came about, I mean, it would, even without a doctor's excuse, you might could justify, but I, I, in my opinion, I, I can't go along with it now. I ain't the only one sitting up here, and the rest of y'all can have input into it, what you think about it.
Now, if it had been current up till the COVID, that would be one thing.
Right.
Now, be up late, one, two years, that's.
But, I mean, we'll do what we can to help you. You know, and make sure that next year, that you get, you know, you go down there.
Because I wasn't working in two thousand and nineteen, that was a whole different secret. I started in twenty twenty, so.
But I mean, you, you do what you need to do with the tax assessor office, and, you know, we'll have that part out of the way. So ev- everything will be like it needs to be in, but, I mean, I, I can't, and I mean, I, I think we need to vote on this to decline the, uh, tax relief.
Yeah, it looks like somebody dropped the ball.
So I'm, I'm gonna call for a motion to de- decline a re, uh, the, the tax relief on the late charges and the interest. Is there a motion on that?
You want me to make a motion to decline the tax relief?
They, they wanted the tax relief on the interest and the penalty for, for nineteen and twenty was the original request.
But he said if it, this can be on the twenty, he would pay the nineteen, because he understood that, you know, he, when we sat, when I sat down and talked to him about, hey, now you were behind in nineteen, you know, but, you know, I wasn't working in nineteen, and that's not my problem, and my fault, you know, but hey, twenty, COVID did happen, and everybody knows what happened in New York, and people were dying left and right, so, you know, we didn't even, like I said, our crew had family members, and we had to wait for five to six weeks for a check, so, you know, some, you know, somebody has to have mercy on somebody, you know?
Well, I mean, I, I can't. And I'm, I'm not just doubting what you're telling me, and I understand, I watch the news, I understand that, but the, the letter, if somebody down here said the same thing, that we had to close down because, and I, I mean, all I'd have to do, I mean, I'd have to take their word for it also. And I can't, I mean, I just ain't, ain't gotten, it's hard to justify that.
This is a whole different, this boss just came in, so this, in nineteen, it was a whole different boss, so this guy came in and he's picking up all the pieces.
Well, I, 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 I think I'm, 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 me, myself, I'm, I'm gonna have to decline.
Okay, that's, I understand.
And I'm, I'm calling for a motion on that.
So you want a motion, I make a motion to decline the tax relief?
Yes.
For Cooks Redlands?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. If, if, if you get it in order, if something else in the future, if you, just say you were the one that's looking out after it, and, and you were in the hospital, and this happened again, and you had a doctor's excuse, or you, or you were, had a, 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 um,
Medical excuse.
A medical excuse from the doctor's office saying that right there. I mean, that was a policy that we put in place.
Yeah, that's what the lady said at the courthouse, and I explained that to her.
And we, we did it on at least one I know of, I, I don't think there was any more, but one, because they, both the man and the woman was in the hospital each time. But anyway, we, we appreciate you coming up in, talking with us.
Mm-hmm, I appreciate y'all. Y'all have a nice evening.
You too.
Uh, the whole business is the, uh, commissioner's office, the water damage. You got a report up here from, uh, people that, that went in there and more, I guess, test, did the testing of the air and.
So is it bad, or is it okay?
It's.
Coughing and cell, which is, uh, a mold that they say, I mean, it's not like the black mold, but it, it can cause problems.
Yeah.
Um, respiratory, cardiac, uh, if you're allergic to it, so.
So they'd be mediated or what?
Cleaning it, um, we don't have a bid that, but he, he kind of threw up, figured out like thirty-three thousand. Um, I talked to Mr. Jerry McNeese, and he said, he's got a guy in Albany that has done some work with him before, and when he was in Baywatch's, that he would get with them, uh, with his condition, I, he hasn't got that.
Yeah, that, that company is very hard.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we just need to table this until we get some more prices?
We need to figure out, I mean, the longer, you have people coming in that build with mold, I mean, chances of, 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 of action.
All right, y'all, y'all wanna consider the, the move?
Whatever, I mean, whatever we need to do, I just, I don't want anybody to come back sick.
I think you need to get them out of there.
All right.
I do.
Somebody come down sick, this is gonna be a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, do, uh?
We'll just come up with a plan on, on the move.
And still get some prices, I mean, we still gonna have to clean it either, I mean.
Some have to be cleaned, yeah.
As long as it ain't occupied, so.
What y'all need to move, just some backs, some strong backs?
Some leave.
Yeah.
Y'all ain't doing nothing, y'all.
I'm just, I'm wrapped up unless it rains.
We got, we got Brad in his crew.
Okay, yeah. So y'all do that next week, this week?
We'll come up with a plan.
Y'all gonna go back down there to Wee Woods, near, after storm.
You gonna occupy the same offices?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I think, I think Rex got one of them on, on the end, but I don't think that'll matter.
Yeah.
We can do that, get on that backside.
All right, I'm okay with that. That, that agreeable? All right, I don't think that's nothing we need to vote on, I think we just need to agree.
As soon as possible.
Yeah. All right, um, the next thing is the fueling station, we done talked about this, but the, the cost is, as time goes on, little things that, that wasn't included in the original cost keep coming up, and, uh, to do it where it looked and was, it was a turnkey deal. I mean, you, you talking about four hundred thirteen thousand dollars, that's, that's concrete, drive in, all the way around and out, fence, shelter, all that stuff, we don't have to do all that. But we need to do the fueling station, because you, you sitting in a situation, I mean, we done kind of agreed to do it, we, we don't need to back out of this deal, because it's kind of already in motion. Because the county got no fuel reserve, and what we sitting in now is, you had cyber attack on the pipeline, you had a pipeline that was down for service several years ago, and then it had an accident, so there was an interruption in it then, you could have a hurricane come along like we did before, this would be fuel that we had on hand, it wouldn't be having to rely, we don't have to top tanks off right now. That's a major cost at this point. Get enough in there to get going, we can work on that later on. The concrete, you don't have to do the driveway, we can gravel that thing in, and we can.
We could add it if we.
Add the shelter later on. Doug's got a quote coming.
Actually, I've got, the quotes is in that secondary pack that, that came after the agenda.
Okay.
Um, there's, there's one quote, full concrete, and a little foot extra, it's about thirty thousand dollars cheaper. Just to, just to pour the pad and, uh, crush and run, I guess, was that what, Andy, that stuff that we used over at the helicopter pad?
Mm-hmm.
That, that stuff's working out good, so I mean, that, to me, that would work. And if we did away with the fence.
You know how much that crush and run is? Yeah, it's just.
Right now, I don't believe, but, uh,
Ten dollars a ton, or?
We may still have some stuff that, um, we used that landfill and the helicopter pad that came from, um, uh, it was the Charter House, even. And what we've used of it has worked great, it works the same, and it was a third of the price. If y'all wanna gravel it, I'd, I'd recommend we put some matten down and gravel it, and, um, I'll check with.
That wouldn't stop us in the future, though, that'd be a base for in the day and future.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be a base where if you wanted to asphalt it or, or put concrete on it later, I mean, um, we'd do it just like we just did two roads, you know, in, in the county, and they're, they're just like they were today, we put them down. That matten under it is what we need to do, is put matten under it, and then it won't go nowhere. I've got one roll of matten, and it's not, it's not really expensive, you know, we can, we can get a couple of rolls of matten, and I'll check with Kaylin and see if he still got some of that stuff from Charter House, and this real economical is, it's just not grand, you know, it's just crushed up lot and concrete and everything, but we use that landfill and the helicopter pad.
It's held up at the helicopter pad.
All right, um, we don't have to do the shelter right now. He told, uh, Doug, that we, with Doug, you come along there and dig the footer later on for the shelter. And that, I mean, we, that or the fence. So what's, I mean, y'all wanna go with the, uh, you got this price right here.
Now, Craig, I didn't add you. The second price, I don't know if you seen, but, but if we, if we take off the concrete and the fencing, we're down about three sixty-one.
What is that, yeah?
It's not, it's not here, but I, I got it, I was making it. Um, but if we do that, um, because I know Faye, Faye's got to, we've gotta have it ready to go and, and go to the banks with these numbers.
And we gotta know how we're gonna pay this yearly loan, is it gonna be out of T-S blast, or was it gonna be paid out every year?
All right, the three sixty-one, that's gonna be your basic.
That, that's the, that's the agreement that you guys signed with that company, all, all of their work. Um, the pad, about fifty thousand dollars is, is the, the full pad, that's gonna hold the, um, the def tank and the, the pad, plus the, the bollers is what costs some money too, those are the, apparently, you have to have a four-foot of horse all the way down around it, so nobody runs into it.
Right, the concrete foot, yeah.
Um, we, we make it even cut down on the, the electrical a little bit, um, if, if we do our own, and then Andy had talked about maybe digging the, the line for the water hookup, so if we can get the city to kind of hook it up, then we just, we just do the water ourselves. We, we can cut it down probably to, in the three fifties, but that's about as low as we're gonna be able to go.
You talking about the water, is that just like?
Like a two-inch line or a one-inch?
Just, just to have a spigot there, it sounds like if you do it, and it just gets bad, we just, you can hose it off.
How big is that, two-inch line, or, I mean, how far?
Figure they probably want an inch and a half, and then.
How far you got to run water, where's it got to come from?
The city will probably put us a meter in right there at the dirt road, you know, coming into us, um, we have a meter.
So it's pretty close.
Yeah, rocky tile, yeah, it might be.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Two hours is right off that hole.
We do a cheaper thirty-five, I may come out, y'all pay me thirty-five, I may come out there and do it. No further than that.
Well, based off the, because the, uh, the helicopter base running that line is what, that was thirty-six hundred bucks.
All right.
I think about three fifty-five is probably where we're gonna be sitting at.
We can use the T-S blast for this, and if y'all want to, we can go to some point in time, when you get time, to the DOT office, see if we can get some extra funding from them, maybe to finish the building. Extra funding from them, maybe to finish the Bellevue Road, cause we already wired and we done spent a bunch of that right there. It don't hurt to go ask. That would relieve if we could get some funding.
Get some money to pay for that and use that to pay for this.
Grant money. Can any of it be used for that fueling station?
No.
Not the USDA grant, that looks like vehicles on it. There's grants out there for buildings, but I don't know if a fueling station would classify. We we can look into it. Um another cost I I um Andy and them had sent me over some files to look at and I was just uh reading Shelley's email. We have to have a backup generator for that and there there's nobody cost that. That's gonna be about ten thousand dollars added to that. That has to run off backup generator.
This was. Me and Layden had talked about it and I think Nikki talked, I mean, I I might have talked to all of y'all. Can you have a portable generator that you could pull in there in an emergency and just have it rigged up so you could go have?
If it'll power it.
Yeah, I don't see.
It wouldn't take much to run it, would it?
We don't.
It's just one ten.
Yeah, so I mean, we you could get, you could get a pretty good sized generator on the trailer.
Yeah, it ain't gonna take much to run that.
I mean, you buy buy a generator, I mean, for less than five thousand dollars, you can go up there and hook a cord to the thing if you got about.
I don't know what all the what they're gonna.
KW would run it, wouldn't it? I mean, like a.
I got a nine thousand and that house cost about twelve hundred dollars to run my whole house.
Yeah, see something.
Yeah.
So I had about twelve then, twelve hundred. So we're still in the in the three fifty five.
Three fifty five. Do we need to budget that? Is that what we, is that what we're trying to? Are are we?
Yeah, we're trying to get a figure so we can take it to the bank.
Bank.
And we also need to do the minutes so we're gonna pay it out T-S blast.
Now, any of these other departments gonna use it or they gonna put any money in?
We got, I done talked to big fleet. And if. If there's a cost savings to them, they would use the fuel out of it, same way with the city. And I mean, I can't, we can't tell and Doug's been working on the. What we've been buying fuel for, what you can buy a semi truckload of fuel for versus what the cost is at the pump today. He's working on that right there. I can't, I can't go to them and tell them how much they're, I can't tell them that they're gonna save ten cent a gallon. I mean, I I just. We ain't got that far along yet. But if there's a cost savings to them and we got an administrative fee or whatever that we use on there. Would help to pay the offset the cost of the thing. And Vic Vic was agreeable with that right there. I mean, if it saved them some money, it did. And you know, that it didn't matter that we made a little bit of money on it. It he didn't, he didn't back off.
As long as it's a little cheaper for them.
Yeah.
Plus our fuel will be offset anyway because it's gonna be cheaper.
Yeah, it's about fifty cent cheaper.
Yeah, it'd be it'd be fifty cent a gallon cheaper.
So I've got three companies that's actually put put in now and um. They're looking at, we would pay rack price, which is their cost plus one to two cent over that and then freight to get me to from Baywatch's or Albany, whichever we go with. So I mean, we're gonna save probably forty, forty five, yeah.
But Doug went over there.
You figure ten cent to put it in and out, that's what you usually figure, something like that. So you saving thirty five.
Yeah, if you save a fifty cent a gallon, it gonna take a long time for it to burn.
But that's only, that's only daily and that could be, like you told me, um the guy from total patrol and calling day and said. The price that I gave is which is your package, he says it's done gone up seventeen cents since then. So I mean, it's gonna fluctuate. We'll really never know. Um I mean, we can subscribe to that rack price website and we'll know what's worth if they're trying to cheat us, but. But it's, it's gonna be whatever they buy it for plus one to two.
Once you get a relationship with them though, they gonna try and be the lowest, cause they won't keep, they want you to keep buying from them.
It'll probably go down when you have a change in leadership.
Well, Doug went over and looked at the one that had in Somano County and it it's got underground tanks, but. I mean, they're set up for it and. I mean, we need, we need to do this. I've done it a long time ago.
Yeah.
So. What we need, if if it's agreeable, is to go on forward with the thing. I mean, you got the basic cost. To get this thing up and running. When you add the shelter later on, when you add the fence later on and and some of these other little things. Uh it's gonna be secured. Alright.
We're we're gonna run cameras to the nine one one center. So instead of a fence, there'll be a camera that's always, somebody's gonna be have eyes on that camera.
Andy, y'all still having a problem with the fuel as far as filters and stuff like that, as bad as it was?
We we do, we do have problems, you know.
You gonna say it right there on that also, by not having all these problems with the bad fuel that they get.
Have you have you figured out how much fuel do we burn?
Uh that's what I was doing today. Right, right now, an estimate about sixty five thousand gallons was this past year.
Sixty five thousand.
And I haven't gone back to like a five year, I'm gonna try to do a five year plan.
You had to guess what would you think the school was doing? Probably that much?
Probably that much. And then the city, the city had talked about their their.
So if we, so if we could buy a hundred thousand dollar bulk, we we could uh, that's thirty five thousand dollars. I make payment on it one.
Alright, is it agreeable to do this out of T-S blast?
Do you need a number?
Well, I what I need, yeah, I need also for y'all to make a motion for us to um go to the banks and.
Yeah, that's the big thing.
And get get interest rates.
It's like three fifty, three sixty, three seventy?
We can just give them a ballpark.
Ballpark, you don't need a exact figure.
I'd say the three sixty. Alright.
So you need a motion to go to the bank to ask for three hundred and fifty thousand for the fueling station. So move.
We'll shop around and do some things.
Alright, Layden made the motion. Is there a second? All in favor? Alright, motion cured. I wanna go on the record as I'm in favor of it also. Um alright, the next thing on the agenda is, do we need, is there anything else we need to do with that other than that? Okay. Uh the landfill. The water and the second tank, you got. We talked about doing this down there when we first went down there. Do y'all want to? Do this or hold up on it for right now or?
Well, we got all this other stuff going on. It might not be a bad idea to hold it up a little bit. What kind of figures you talking about?
I mean, you got on page twenty five, you got, you got to look it up. I mean, you look at it right there.
Uh Philip Jones quoted that the mo- the motor is bad on that on that well and it's submersible, so he'll have to pull that. And um he says he thinks it's a three inch well, which that's cost a lot more than four inch. And I just told we we want them to dig a hole in well. So he quoted about seventeen hundred for that. To fix the uh that motor and off. And out of the second tank, we we've already got the application with the um health department and waiting on the soil sample people to come out. Because we have to get the, to make sure the soil is fine to put the second tank in. And once they come down, uh Span has quoted probably between two and four thousand on the second tank. He said more so twenty three hundred, but depending on what the soil sample said and where where it needs to go.
Who is this?
Chad Span.
Alright, if you're not on that old landfill, there gonna be issues there with the E P D?
Uh that we're probably gonna need to contact. But that's why they need to do a soil sample first.
To make sure that we don't do something we ain't supposed to do. But I don't think they gonna ever.
Uh and I don't think it'll have to be that that long. I think they can go right outside that building down where it looks like it's that clean uh grass where nothing looks like it's been touched. That'll probably be okay if we do that. So um but we're waiting on that. We're waiting on the soil sample guy to come down and uh. We'll know more then. But I I do want to talk to you guys. We, me and Faye talked about that. It's it's so hot out there now. We do need to put either a window unit out there in that building. And I just wanna run that by you so we can, we can either go get one. I mean, it's, once only gonna be a couple hundred dollars.
Why don't we do it? Why don't we do the window unit and get the porta potty? Y'all wanna do that?
Um that's, we talked about that, the porta potty and and I mean, that that sounds like a good because it comes with the hand washing station.
Yeah.
So it's gonna have water in there and and the.
Well, that'll get us by for for a little while and then we can see how about, yeah, and then we can get the well and get everything fixed and.
I think that's a good start at least.
Cause Philip Jones ain't wanting to do nothing. I'm sure he working on irrigation stuff.
Alright, y'all, we need a motion to do that, Doug. If y'all wanna go that route. All in favor?
Ah.
Alright, motion cured. We'll do that and we'll we'll work towards this other in the future.
About air conditioner local, right?
Uh I don't know how local you gonna get.
Backup, all the place don't like, that's all the place I know.
It's probably gonna have to be home depot somewhere.
I said you gonna try that.
Yeah, I'll try that.
Well, I thought.
Alright. On the new business, we got the uh chamber commerce appointment. Sherry came over there, Doug said he would stand in for her.
I make a motion, Doug build a position.
That's agreeable? Alright, Layden made the motion. Is there a second on that?
I second.
All in favor? Alright, motion cured. Alright, the next thing is the the sheriff's department, the credit card. Uh Rick, you wanna talk to us about the credit card?
Yes, uh credit cards, uh my associate, the sister called the county commissioner's office and asked about getting additional credit cards. Whoever she spoke with, I I don't know, uh said that they didn't have nothing to do with that. We just need to contact the bank and get additional cards. That's what we got.
Rick, they were misunderstanding on that part right there, cause.
Well, I had one credit card, okay, it got rejected at sheriff's conference. When I was paying for a fifteen dollar meal. I was at Jackal Island for four days at a mandated conference. Manded by the state for me to be there. Uh I spent thirty two dollars on food on county in four days. In the past, I've seen the bill if you can pull the budget for six and seven hundred dollars in defense bill on meals in four days by previous construction.
Well, I I I can't, I can't tell you nothing about all that.
Anyway, I got the official two cards like the other day, of course, they were rejected because they hadn't been paid native. My card hadn't been paid in three months.
Well, we we got a handle on all that right there. The one that was looking out after that, got behind with all that. That's neither hand nor yonder, we ain't going back through that again. But we got that taken care of, but the the thing was, is the other card, this letter right here that says about the card. When Sherry called me about and the talk was about ask about opening up an Amazon account also. So y'all, y'all can't, you you.
Craig, let me tell you something and I'm not being big like. I can do whatever I want to do. I can enter in contracts with the sheriff's office. State law says that.
Rick, you you, I talked to the county attorney. The sheriff's department is not the taxing authority. The bills have to come over here. You you can't enter into a contract that that concerns money or business to that. That's the reason the bank a lot of times asks for copies of the minutes to see that we voted on it and approved it. We didn't, we didn't approve this credit card.
You don't have to.
Well, the man, whoever's names on this credit card is the one responsible for the bill now. We didn't sign, we didn't fill out the application.
I didn't fill out an application. I done what I done what I was told.
Somebody had to sign for the credit card.
They were made autonomous, uh wouldn't that sign. They just additional credit cards to the account. And the reason I.
Why, 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 tell us why you need two cards?
The reason I needed the card, the perfect example come up last week. I was at Jackal Island, I had somebody else going to school. They had to have a meal ticket at the training camp, which is sixty dollars, which is a lot cheaper than going to a restaurant. Trying to save money. I tried to do everything I can do to save money. But my credit card is at Jackal Island and they need it one year. There's plenty of examples. When I need a credit card, an extra credit card.
Why do you, why do you need two accounts though? Why couldn't you get a other card on that same account?
That's just how they done it.
So it's two separate accounts, it's not one card on, it's not two cards on one account. It's two separate accounts.
I find so.
Cause the letter that was sent to them said that they wanted an extra credit card with an additional limit of thirty five hundred.
This is the letter.
That was from your office. That y'all signed. So I guess they took that to mean that you wanted two different.
But tell us.
Thirty five hundred limits.
And 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 nobody's trying to to get at odds with one another here, but I mean, that that for us to have a accountability. And to help keep up with everything here and have a track record of what's going on. So we got stuff to compare it to. You you need to get P O's for stuff you order. And and you need to have receipts, itemized receipts for all this stuff so we can, we back up.
Everybody, if they gonna bring a receipt back or if there's not a receipt brought back, they gonna pay for it out of the pot.
Well, we got, this, this is another thing. We got, county don't pay tips. And we never have. I mean, there's, there's. I I'm not gonna go down the list and list the names and stuff like that right there, but now there's been several occasions when that right there happened and we turned them down. And one of them was an eighty dollar tip to a ballet up there at one point in time. We turned that one down.
That that happens.
No, no, it happened and I I ain't going back and call the name, but I'm I'm telling you.
I do my tip and out of my pocket.
We just need broken down receipts. Like if you go to the food, like if you go to a restaurant, only receipts we got were just like it said the amount. It didn't break down what everybody got and Perry likes, Perry has to have a broken down and we didn't get those.
Which we.
Is that them recently?
Yes.
Yeah, but whose receipts were it?
It was from the sheriff's department. I don't remember which card it was. I had to go pull them and it was, are you gone? That way we know if some, cause we've had problems with people taking their wives and husbands and feeding them.
Oh yeah, I understand that. But I mean, to to keep down any. Misunderstandings about anything like that out there. I mean. Uh that's kind of the way. And and I I don't, nobody's trying to. Not fund y'all to to for your, you know, for public safety. I mean, that 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 ain't the issue.
I think what we're saying is we want one account with multiple credit cards on one account, not two accounts with multiple. Right. So how many cards? I mean, so you need two cards on?
Is that agreeable to go with one account? But but listen, let let, let me ask you to help us out with this too. And I I ain't being demanding, I'm asking. Uh you know, i- if y'all need to do something, it's like the Amazon account. Has the sheriff's office got an Amazon account? Well, see, the county's already got an Amazon account. That's another account we got to keep up with. And what what was happening in the past. Is y'all would get a P O to order whatever y'all wanted off the app, off Amazon. They would get the order. There was a verification would come to the commissioner's office and what we did was click on there to to verify it and okay it. And and that helps us, we got uh we got a uh e- like an email that 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 we know what's going on.
Right.
And can we, can we just have one Amazon account?
Well, I want a main thing in Amazon, yeah. It hasn't been you three months.
Yeah, but I mean.
Pain in the butt when you need to order something, trying to get it to somebody and sit down with them and it's it's a waste of time.
It it ain't got to do that. You need to get a P O to to make, or just say y'all wanted a backing planer down there and you're gonna buy it off Amazon. You need to get a P O to do that. The way we, that's the way we've done it in the past. You get the P O, y'all go make the order. All you got to do is call. Amazon gonna gonna relay the message back to us that there was an order came in from y'all.
Right.
For the backing planer. And we gonna accept it or decline it. That's, 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 that's the way we wanna do it.
And Amazon is if you use a credit card to order stuff, correct?
We have, it's just uh, we just pay Amazon monthly, kinda like their own credit card. We just pay them monthly for everything we order.
Okay.
See, it it goes, it simplifies things for us. That's.
Right.
I mean, if if you will, if y'all don't mind, you know, help us out with this thing.
I I I will, but just do me a favor and please give a meal to pay them.
We gonna, well. You you was a witness to all the stuff that went on with the clerk. And all that and we're not even getting, I'm not talking about all that, but that's part of what. That that's part of why that got behind. So that's caught up now. Is it agreeable with you? Is it agreeable with you, and we'll make the motion to do it, if it's agreeable with everybody here, to have one credit card account and let us have one Amazon account and, and go through this thing like this right here, and, and we, I don't think there's nothing that y'all needed for y'all's own well-being from, in the past, from body cameras to whatever, that we've ever declined.
Right.
We, we just trying to get the bookwork in order, so it simplifies everything in this office, that's, that's the goal.
Well, if, if we gonna do, and the only reason I was concerned about this, like I say, the credit card, my personal credit card, or the credit card that was given to me has thirty-five hundred dollars in it. The bill hadn't been paid in three months, it got declined at sheriff's conference.
See, the, the part of that right there is, with that other card, we had no idea the card was in existence.
Right.
I mean, we, we, we get a bill, we don't, this ain't the card that we issued to the, to sheriff's department.
You know, that was the understanding that was given, now what the bank can do for it, I don't know. But if the bill is paid on a month with basis, the thirty-five hundred dollars is acceptable credit.
Yeah.
Uh.
That's, that's, that's no.
But if the bill and the minimum payment was made online, just get it activated back, before I would know, and I'm asking, is the bill gonna be paid in full on a monthly basis?
The bill's always been.
So, we haven't paid interest on that account.
It's always been paid in full every month, it's just we had turnover and chaos and I was doing three jobs, but me and Jill have worked our putts off trying to get everything called up. We've never just paid the minimum until I just had to get you going the other day.
Okay.
We pay, the one for the commissioners too is paid everything every month, at the whole balance, we don't just pay minimum. She just went ahead and, and did that so you, you could keep going and tell Jill to get the whole bill paid.
Well, I didn't use it for one more time, like I say, I spent thirty-two dollars of county money in four days at Jackal Island, so that's amazing accomplishment.
But I mean, stuff like, I mean, we appreciate it, but stuff like the credit card, we had, we didn't know the card was in existence, the second card was in existence. So, uh, we all need to know.
Let me, let me, let me stop that. At one point in time, uh, the credit card was known to be in existence because the mail was open and Jennifer was told when she went in to do something else, they said, oh, yeah, your credit card, um, we know. The credit, yeah, it was known to be in existence, nothing was trying to be hid.
I, 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 we, we.
Deception, duh, duh.
I mean, we.
We saying, none of us knew about it.
Right.
Nobody knew about it.
See, if, if it had been, if you'd have said, hey, I need a second credit card, we would have asked, the board would have a, a, asked for approval of a second card for you on that same account, then, and, and there would be no misunderstanding.
And, and if I hadn't been told to do it the way I done it, that's what I would have planned on doing. If I had been told, you need to ask the county commissioners, that's what I would have done, because I know the power force, right?
All right, I mean, we, we, we got, everybody's got an understanding and everything, and if that's, what we talked about was agreeable. We need a motion to let him have a second credit card on that account. I'll make it.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right.
And I'll, uh.
But in, in the future, if you will, help us out with that right there, anything you need like that right there, even if it was between meetings, relay the message to Doug up here.
Yeah.
He gonna get a hold of every one of us, and he's gonna.
Well, I think, I think we'll start running a lot of moves around.
Well, things have been a little bit hectic since January, but.
Oh, yeah, right there.
But, everybody's willing to work with you.
And, and I'm not talking about time, just talking about mine, you know?
But.
Now we back into this COVID situation and, uh, money.
All right, is there any more discussion, was there anything that I might have overlooked about the credit card, anything, and we need to talk about, about that? We got that all out of the way. All right, the next thing is your surplus list.
Right.
You got, you got these vehicles on him, and, uh, what you got here, what we did, you, you had a, a list of it back before you got to be sheriff, or, or you took office. We had these vehicles like graded as what condition they were in.
Yeah. Well, most of them are not even running.
Well, can you, can you, cuz when we go, when we go to advertise this right here, we, we, go ahead.
A better description, I think's what he's asking, you know, like, it's got a million miles on it, and it's not cranking, or the motor's blowed up in it, you know what I'm saying?
Can you kinda grade these things for us? And, and tell us, cuz if, if one of them got a brand-new motor or a brand-new transmission, it needs to be listed down there, we don't need to take five hundred or a thousand dollars. Yeah.
I, yeah, my G fifty doing that while I was going, he handed me, handed it to me Friday, and, and I figured it wouldn't even be in there, so.
Like the tires, like are the tires, you know, like.
Got new tires.
You see what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
But, give us a, a general description of that right there, cuz I had to get Robert Greer to go back, he did, had the same thing as this right here, and he went back and, and it was more or less, uh, detailed out.
Right.
It, it, so we kinda had an idea of what these things were.
I agree, I agree.
Uh, is there anything else we need to go over with you that I might have overlooked? The lawsuit.
That's not, that's not really the pain in the knee, but that's.
Yeah, that, that happened.
Ready for my time. Can we add some to that, if we gonna do a surplus list, can we turn in some, some stuff to go along with it?
Sure.
We got some stuff signed, can we add to it, I mean?
When did this hap, when did this happen? When did this happen?
Wait back.
Uh, I think it was two thousand nineteen, October, November, last year.
August seventeen, nineteen, that's when it happened.
We got, January, we got this letter, January the sixth, two thousand twenty, and none of us had any knowledge that this had even taken place.
Right.
I mean, there, there's.
I've got no notification, but.
There's nothing.
I've got that, I've seen that in the file.
All right, has there been any, you might tell us some of this right here, I mean, you may or may not know, has there been any correspondence with the deputy it was?
Not, not, not for me, uh, I, he wouldn't never work for me. Won't never work for me.
Well, I mean, there's nothing for us to act on on this, but it's gonna affect your department, it's, I mean, probably.
Could be, could be.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, he never worked for me, I bet.
I know it, but, uh, what's, what's may happen is somebody down there that had some knowledge might be called, called up, subpoenaed to testify that he might have spoken with or whatever, did you?
Yeah, I, I have, I have not been contacted by anybody, evidently, the lawsuit was fired, uh, filed prior January.
Well, it's actually.
Generally, generally what happens, like in the past, I mean, I've been around for twenty-seven years, they send a packet with the request and all the facts, and somebody had to receive that in some home.
Well, the letter here.
I can't say who did.
This happened in two thousand nineteen, this letter dated January the sixth, two thousand twenty, and none of us had any knowledge that this had taken place.
Right, Mr. Craig, that, that letter was found on the, the previous, previous clerk's computer. So, all the way we knew about it was when the, uh, lawyer contacted us about, uh, needing the body cam footage and any kind of, uh, police report. So, we contacted Byron, he, he, he got us the sheriff's report, um, but nobody knew anything about this, um, until they actually found it on that computer. Uh, my understanding is, uh, they hand delivered the letter to the previous sheriff, and my also understanding is that he actually handed them over a copy of the body cam. So, our, we've instructed our lawyers to reach out to their lawyers to get a copy of the body cam, so one does exist. But we, we don't have a copy of it.
No. We'll, you may get some notification or something, and if you.
Well, if I, if I, if I get, if I get in contact with anybody about lawsuits, I'm gonna contact Doug and I'm gonna make sure the county attorney's guy got the other media.
But we, if we get anything, we'll share it with you also. Is there anything else we need to go with you?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good, y'all have a meeting anymore, I can get out.
All right, we, I think we got it covered, thank you now. All right, the, the fuel, you got some information on, uh, the proposal, it's page forty-seven through fifty-one. Uh, I mean, this is just a general description of what.
Yeah, those are the two that, uh, that actually gave us one of them, there's one that's on that extra paper that I gave you guys today, that, uh, is from, we've got one from Bryce, Olin, Blakely, uh, Total Petroleum in Bainbridge, and, uh, the one today is from, uh, Plantation, uh.
Where's it at?
Petroleum, it's in that, the, the form that, that I gave you some, it's an additional paper.
I'll put it up.
Yeah, um, and then I'm waiting on, uh, Sharper wanted to give a quote for, or a proposal, and there's two in all of them, but, but they have not, um, they have not given us, lady was gonna give them, they're first thing.
You said, that right there.
What did I do with it?
Any other opinion on this?
Yes, it's, it's about.
Nikki got it. Nikki, what you do?
I'm sorry.
Are they gonna be on that?
I believe so, yeah.
You gotta have a two-inch line for the semi to hook to it, to, uh, yeah, that's your standard.
The, the good thing about the Total Petroleum and, uh, and, um, the, the one out of Thomasville.
You got, probably got.
They'll put electronic monitors on there.
I guess.
So, we won't have to actually stick the tank, it'll actually, it'll read it and, and email us when it gets loaded. Versus the old school sticking.
We ain't got to do anything with that right now, we, we need to get, focus on getting the thing installed. And, uh, but that's.
I'm gonna update you every time, every time somebody puts a proposal in, I'll, I'll get it.
That's just some information.
Did you look at, have you, did you glance at prices today just to see what they were at the phone?
But, but we may have, there, there's, there's, uh, like a website, that's the petroleum website, Odek or whatever, it has the rack price, and we may have to get a subscription to that to be able to see what the value price is.
You probably gonna mine a little somewhere.
Sometimes twice a day.
But we'll be locked in, yes, we'll be like.
You probably go to the New York Stock Exchange and see, like, the commodities.
You good, probably, but, but we will be locked in at what price we buy, like, we buy today at two, uh, two dollars a gallon, yeah, until six P M of the same day, we'll be locked in.
One of these people that we're selling it to, whatever the price that we pay, we're gonna add an additional whatever to yours, ten cent, five cent, whatever, and that way you don't have to, if we're paying whatever for it, it doesn't matter, virus changes.
We got paper trail.
Yeah, yeah, then we just gonna add a five cent or whatever, I'm just saying five cent.
Yeah, we'll have to see how much they using them, man.
Fifty cent to each. We don't need to change it, it needs to be like a set thing that we're gonna add to.
I don't know whether this thing will do it or not, but when they swipe that card in this, if we do business with the school system.
Right.
It needs to be, that thing, it needs to pri, the gallons, it needs pricing.
At whatever we say.
When they swipe the card.
Yeah.
Just like they would if it was a credit card.
Correct, correct, their price, whatever their price is and our price.
Yeah.
I reckon our price would be zero or whatever.
Um, the next thing we got is just the safety, the discount forms, I reckon all we need to do is sign this.
Yeah, that's, that's yearly, uh, yearly, that's for A C C G.
All right, the other thing on the new business is the Caterpillar is the, uh, the lease agreement, and that's for that, uh, excavator. Y'all, y'all got any questions on that? I mean, it's pretty much the same thing. Uh, the other excavator. What's?
That's the limb thing.
Limb cutter.
Yeah, limb cutter.
Have they picked up the old one yet, has it? Yeah, they got it same, pretty much same, that's.
All right.
Norde's in that one, ain't it?
Um.
Got five, spunked out with a little oil.
So many, five years, so many hours or something like that?
Five, I don't know how long the lease is, but it's a three or five year lease, it should be on the warranty. All the time we got it, it would be.
Nikki, you supposed to be fine, Nikki, where's that, Nikki, find it, Nikki.
Trying to find it, trying to find it.
Bare, bare parts, we have to pay for it, but.
Engine, engine powertrain, is that what it'll be?
Yeah, yeah.
And in the head, I have like a six-month warranty or something like that?
The head is ours.
Oh, it's our head, okay. It's in there somewhere, I'm gonna find it before I go, I'll find it before I go to bed tonight.
But he is, I, we all.
You're in with the check.
Oh, no, I'm talking handy, and he's just hold off right now, too, it's kind of like U S A, U S D A.
See the insurance?
Yeah.
Machine's good, it's, it's a nice machine to run, it, it's a little better than hell, it's a little heavier, have a harder time moving it, removing it.
You would think it'd start right off.
Here's just on page sixty-three, look at that.
Sixty-three.
What are we currently feeling on that old excavator, Mark?
Uh, he's got several things that come out.
It wasn't a whole lot different for the new one, though, if I remember, I don't remember exactly the numbers, but it wasn't.
I don't think it was forty-four. The first one's a three oh eight, this one's a three oh nine, and basically the only difference is it's got two, two hydraulic arms, one runs the machine and one runs to assessors, which is our, we got a E on our. But, but it allows you to walk and cut at the same time, before you walk and you cut, I would say.
And that, that. I ain't seeing the warranty part. It's got the, the lease agreement, but I ain't.
I, I asked for it by the other day, and double check to get it made sure.
Maybe on page sixty-eight, see if the, this is the insurance.
I just wanted to make sure it's in there, 'cause it won't come up. And you'll have a problem, and not be under warranty, that truck here.
The insurance stuff, yeah.
He, he assured that it would be in there.
Well, I ain't seeing, I'm seeing insurance and I'm seeing the terms of the lease.
There's a page, ain't there? I just see the purchase agreements.
Okay, you need, you need to check on the warranty, cuz I, late, late looking at it, and I don't looked at it, I ain't seeing.
It just says vendor warrants that upon delivery, the cap financial will be the owner and absolute title. I ain't seen nothing about how long it is or anything like that. I remember some number, I ain't, I ain't gonna say, it seemed like it was, like, two thousand hour, three-year, four-year, two thousand hour or something like that, I can't remember exactly what it was.
They all got time, you know, loan collectors, everything's kinda got hour, I mean, I think our loan collectors five days or something like that.
I ain't seen it.
If they look over this thing tomorrow, if I need to come back up and sign it, I will, I, I ain't seeing the warranty thing, Lady ain't seeing it neither.
No, I would see, they want you to have insurance, what they dropping on.
You don't, y'all see the, see anything about the warranty, no?
He can send you something pretty quick though on that, okay, I mean, you called him, I mean, he can. Yeah, they're saying that, I'm saying that.
All right. What, what do we need to do with this, other than signing?
It's already approved, man.
Yeah. Just find out about the warranty, okay, if I need to come back up and sign it tomorrow, I'll do it, uh. Oh, Mr. Parks got disbursements, um, you got audit to sales ratio?
Yeah, that was just something, they, they emailed to us, they said they email it every year, got that's like the, for the school system and all.
Yeah.
It's just a report, I just sent you all.
Uh, the road department summary, anybody got any questions on that? Is there anything else we need? Is there anything else we need to go? Any departments, anything? If they ain't, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Alright, motion two.